Just bullshit, I mean.
I'd like to call the planning board meeting of March fourteenth, order please. First on our agendas are approve our minutes from last meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. Second by Tim, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is our lean's voucher. Motion to approve.
Second.
Second Sandy, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first on our agenda is JB landscaping twenty-five sixty-nine Whitehaven. I don't know.
Good evening, planning board. My name is Brendan Cross from Terran Architects. Here to talk about twenty-five sixty-nine Whitehaven Road, JB landscaping expansion. This is to be a proposed expansion of three metal buildings under the existing site. One twelve mini storage unit and two six. Six unit construction warehouses. The building orientation is preferred. Building to the north is to. Shield the existing. Construction yard from the right of way and the building to the west is to shield the existing residents from any potential headlights coming from the facility. The metal buildings are similar to. The style of the ones constructed in the brick oven pizzeria just up the road. The two six unit metal buildings are supposed to have restroom facilities. We're preparing to work with the town engineer and the health department to make sure that we have the adequate system put in if the project is to be approved. That's about it. We provided thirty-two parking spaces for the two construction warehouse buildings. Which I believe is two more than required. And we do have a list of preliminary comments back from the building department and we are prepared to make those adjustments.
And that list is?
This is the minimum front yard setback and then two district is to be seventy-five feet. We have currently on there is about sixty-eight point three feet. I believe that was because the setback, the original setback was taken from the center line of the road and not the right of way. But we do have adequate room to potentially move that first building back about seven feet. And we can provide that seventy-five foot setback and also have the adequate fire separation between the two metal buildings as required still.
What else did they have for you?
They had. The number of parking spaces. They mentioned that in recent. Projects, many storage buildings weren't required to have parking spaces. So the. Spaces that we have provided would be specifically for the two metal construction buildings and not for many store.
Now, if I was coming to the mini storage building and I park out front between that and the designated parking spots, I'm going to shut up parking off.
Yes, sir. Our intention or our knowledge was that that would be a temporary. Temporary thing, people weren't parking their long term. If they needed to use those spaces, we don't anticipate the construction. Units to be filled up with with those spaces. They have overhead doors to be able to park inside.
Are the doors going to be on the parking lot side or on the backside where the road is going to the back?
No, sir, the apartment outside.
And and I see your septic field is right to the Z dotted line, your property line?
Yes, sir, anticipated septic field, we haven't gone into.
I think there's going to be a setback there from the county. I know residentially there is. There's a ten-foot setback residentially, but I don't know what it would be in the M. You'd have to talk to them, make sure you talk to the county.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Is there any way to get the mini buildings and slide them over and put your long driveway to go like through your? Kind of wiggle through to get to the back to have more space between the mini buildings and the parking lot?
Yes, sir. I believe we can talk with the client about that and I can talk with my principal. We're just trying to leave at least adequate room for the any construction vehicles to get into their spots as well. So it was a. We had just enough space to get what we needed down there, but I'm sure, you know, we can probably find some wiggle room, we have some.
And the two one next to the island in the middle, those are handicaps.
Yes.
Does it, okay.
Anyone else have any other questions?
I'm just looking at between the parking area and your building is only twenty-seven feet.
That left metal building, sir?
Yeah. Is that what I'm looking at, twenty-seven feet?
Twenty-seven, seven.
Seventy-seven point seven.
Twenty-four is what's required. Yeah, I'm just thinking, how do you get construction vehicles in and out of those bays? A guy with a trailer or something, I don't know how you get that in.
You'd have to drive over the parking lot.
Right. Just just not a lot of room is all I'm trying to say is. And then this building in the back, forget that. How do you give anything in there? So these on the right, these are just mini storage here?
Yes, sir. We were not, oh, sorry.
Is it possible to put the mini storages behind the back building? And then you would have a whole lot more, you know, slide your parking lot over, you'd have a whole lot more room. And they would go around which. Since they're only going to be going there and unload and go, it's not like they're going to be doing anything, you know what I mean for storage?
Yes, that is a possibility, this configuration is just has been agreed by the client. There's, you know, plenty more ways we could most likely configure this. I believe there is existing parking and storage in that construction yard in the back. So I think the client was just trying to, you know, keep as much room for his existing property as possible.
Anyone else have any?
So the the building in the back, it's, is that just cold storage or is that the same thing with bathrooms in there?
The existing building, sir?
No, the one, the one in the back, the shielding, the construction yard.
The six unit.
Yes, sir, the one in the back is proposed to have restroom facilities.
Those are going to have restrooms as well, yes, sir.
So those are going to be similar to. I'm going to use Dave Mazur.
Right.
As an example, similar to Dave's on the on Grand Island Boulevard.
So you're going to have twelve of them with bathrooms in it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the two six unit ones are going to be like actual. Like vehicle storage plus an office building and a bathroom in each. Each unit? Because I think that's what the one next to the brick oven pizza is, so is that what you're proposing for the two six unit?
We we are proposing, it's either material storage or just construction equipment storage. We weren't necessarily told if it was like vehicle storage, just just equipment and materials.
So no like office?
As far as right now, we don't believe so. But if the client, you know.
Just like dead storage?
Yes, sir.
So it's more like self-storage with the single one wide open unit of the size shown?
Yes, ma'am.
No mandor?
That's different, okay.
Yes, sir. I know I have a smaller one, but yes, the the triangles indicated on there is just our standard for a mandor or entrance at that point.
I'm I'm confused with the bathrooms, if I'm just going to be coming there and dropping stuff off and leaving, why do I need a bathroom?
Um, it was.
Just an amenity?
Yes, yes, sir, given to us by the client in case they are to do any any type of in and out, if they have laborers there that are there.
Anyone else, any questions or comments from anyone?
So this is just here for discussion?
Just discussion only?
Yes, sir.
I I have a kind of a question.
Absolutely.
The client owns the. The other storage areas to the right.
Um, no, I don't believe so. I believe he owns the the property in the back, it's it's mostly.
The stuff on the right, he doesn't own it, twenty-five forty-nine?
As far as I'm aware, I don't believe so, sir.
So this is. Okay, so this one here is going to be, has nothing to do with the next door.
No, sir.
In fact, that's a mini stories for that you never see anything is.
I think I think that's the mini storage that used to be where the car dealership.
Right, right, but you never see anything.
I think Kristen.
A real nice clean operation.
I think you did that, didn't you, Kristen? The one on Whitehaven where the car dealership used to be, the storage units? Yeah, that that was Kristen's, yeah. So yeah, Frank, that's completely separate.
That's Dave as well.
Yeah, that two twenty, that dotted line across the back is the property cutoff. Okay, anyone else, any other things?
Just, just a comment, I just noticed that I know that there's a an occupied residence, I guess it's, I think it's occupied residence just next door. It seems very close to your large six unit storage building and. I know you said that you're going to be moving the six unit storage building back seven feet, but it seems to be. Could be very massive and maybe a little bit of a visual. A visual complaint type issue perhaps, are you planning any landscaping between the the residents and the building and? Have you reached out to the landowner there with the, to to get feedback on plans?
No, ma'am, I believe we're going for this discussion first, but also landscaping, the client hasn't specified anything yet and we didn't go over. Go over their want for any landscaping there as well, but that can be something brought up.
How how tall is that building?
Or fencing, maybe.
I believe that building is to be twelve feet.
Twelve, twelve feet or twelve?
Uh, the E, sir, yes.
So it's what, an eighteen foot?
Just about, sir, yes.
Isn't isn't the residence on an M one?
It is.
Yeah, I think that residence has been there for about. I don't know, fifty or sixty years. I mean, maybe you could pop off that one end piece or that one end unit to stay away from the residence a little farther. It's an idea, I think, I think with Sandy's point, I was going to say the same thing, Sandy caught, beat me to it. And I think we're all a little concerned about the parking lot being so tight there. So maybe you can come up with something. And and then the back, I mean. It looks like. Stone and this looks like a landscaper. So so he's not, he's probably going to pull out in the morning and be gone for the day. And then pull in at night. So where that long driveway goes to the back. If you could slide those buildings over, he could just go around the buildings to the back since he's going to be. In and out once or twice tops a day.
Absolutely, sir, very possible.
So that's, it's an idea anyway. Anyone else have anything else? Okay, I hope we helped you and hope to see you again. Thank you.
Number two, Island Pet Lodge. Twenty-one twenty Elvin Road. Is someone here for? No one, no one's here. Okay, motion to table.
Motion table.
Second.
Second, did you get that early, we've got a bunch there. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is John Valenti seventeen fifty-four Grand Island Boulevard. John, are you here? Well, it was for discussion only, so he really, he's not online, Pete, or anything?
I think he was your last.
He was here last month.
Discussion only and we gave him a bunch of suggestions and.
Can we, can I make a motion to put him down? Moving to the bottom. Under unfinished business numbers, we'll call it number six. Casey shows up.
I would make a motion, well, we can do that or we can just table it.
Well, I I'd hate to table if he comes walking in the door.
Well, he's on the agenda for.
It's up to you guys. You want to make a motion to table, Bob?
I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Second.
Second, Tim, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Red.
Yeah.
Okay, he's tabled. Okay, now we're going right into number four, it's South Point PDD.
How you doing? You okay? Yeah. Excellent. Doug Shid. The Shid Architectural representing Associate Grand Island LLC. Also have Matt Newkin from Passero Associates on the engineering side. And and Jeff Glumbo on the legal side. So we're here for you, for you tonight, asking. For recommendation to approve the preliminary site plan for subdivisions A, B, C, D. E for South Point. Well, there's a couple of things I want to make sure that you understand clearly. Back in August submitted phase one, which was the walking path. And the conservation easement, which was required by the town board. And so the language on that needs to get modified a little bit, what we submitted last August rather than the. Hundred and nine acres under the resolution plus the four point seven acres is we submitted a hundred and twenty-nine acres of easement. In three different easements. And they're, they're shown on the master site plan, we also submitted in August. So there's the two major state wetlands that you all know about, and then there's a federal wetland that's isolated up on the. In between the corridor and it kind of comes down. That's on your packet. And so there is a proposed easement, deed restriction, I should say, that has not been filed yet because we still want the town board to approve that and they have. They definitely need to do that.
And you have provided that information to the town, I think through Jeff to Frank, Beth Holden and her team at our firm, working on that.
It's in the middle of the table right there?
So I just, in general terms, it's 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 what's been shown on the site plan, I just want to make sure that you understand that that's, that's got to be clear. As I said, the walking path was approved last year and constructed for the most part, there's a little bit left to do in the spring. There is an issue with the concept. You guys in January approved the revised concept. Went back to the town board, but they haven't approved it yet. So they're going to need to approve that along with the preliminary plot.
So when when you're saying that we approved the concept, is that?
I can walk through the rather strange way PDD's work, there's asked, the the goal is, once you get past the concept plan, to try to squeeze things together. So that the community sees everything at once. The concept plan that came in that you all signed off on with some recommendations then goes to the plant, to the town board. But what the, what you're actually looking at is, is the concept plan. Excuse me, is the detail plan, which is basically what Doug's presenting tonight, in conformity with the concept plan? So there's sort of three tasks in front of you at this point. One is the typical review of subdivisions, as you always do, there is five of them as does presented. The second is this concept of conformity, is this in conformity? And so you've approved the plan, the question is, is it in conformity with? The 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 prior concept plan? And they've pointed out in their submission, a very detailed submission that they provided you, that there are changes of the impacts. If there is a difference in conformity, when it eventually goes to the town board. They are required to hold a public hearing on the detail plan. They can also at that time hold a public hearing on amending the concept plan so that the everything ties in together. That way the public gets to comment on everything, including the concept plan. Rather than doing things sort of piecing back and forth and ping ponging, we take what you did in January. That's, this is the next step and we look at it in terms of these determinations. Hopefully that made some sense in terms of the statute. The third thing that you're looking at is, were the specific things that are in the resolution? That were required for the the detail plan phase included in this, some of those, as Doug alluded to, are already done. The filing of the easements, I think, you know, there's a declaration that Jeff has prepared. And there's a few other things, they have filed those things, but you've got sort of got three discrete tasks in front of you. As you look at this, it's not just the review of the preliminary plots. And so that's what Doug is talking about in terms of. How does what, the first part of which is how does what you did in January compare to the concept plan? Hopefully that made some sense.
Yes, yes, thank you.
So so to get back to that, you guys already approved the revised concept plan.
Okay.
And the detailed plans and subdivisions that you're looking at do comply with that concept. There's no change from that concept plan in January to this preliminary platform you're seeing tonight.
So this guy.
Yep. That's it.
That was our one in January, because I think we made some comments about sidewalks and some other.
Correct.
Wanted that that was some, an entrance someplace, I'm just pulling off the top of my head here. I think we 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 did that, so now this, is this different from what what you're doing now?
No.
This is all the same.
Yeah, the only thing.
Well, not exactly, there are some differences, I think, aren't there, from what you submitted?
Not from what they saw in January, from what the town board approved in twenty twenty, yes.
What you submitted as part of this detailed plan, does it include the changes that they requested in January?
Yes, with the exception of, we haven't shown the sidewalks on Love, Baseline and Staley, and that's just because it's an oversight, not that we don't intend to.
So so to the extent you have shown some of the changes they've asked for, it's different to the shows, to the extent that you haven't shown some of the changes, it will be different, is that a fair statement? Okay, so you you submitted something in January, they asked for some changes, some of those changes are included on what's before them tonight, some of them haven't been shown yet.
Yeah, let me, let me read them just so it's clear. There was, there was five items, sidewalks to be included on subdivisions B, C and D, which is Love Road, Baseline and Staley. Mid-rise apartments to be kept to four stories, which they are. Glen Avon shall be unrestricted through thoroughfare, which we don't care, yeah, yes. I hear the town board doesn't want it to be thoroughfare, you guys can decide. But but we don't, we show it. As as you suggested with unrestricted through there. Subdivision C shall have a homeowners association when we go for subdivision C. And subdivision E will be addressed to the site plan, those are the five conditions that were outlined in January.
Just to make sure, wasn't there some issue that sidewalks couldn't go someplace with wetlands and you were going to check with that? And you were supposed to work with Bob Westfall?
Yeah, we can't put sidewalks across the federal.
Right.
That's an issue.
Yeah, we were talking about that, you were supposed to define that, work that out with Bob.
Yeah, and that hasn't been worked out.
Okay, so Doug, question, with regard to subsections A, B and D. Which are all single family detached. So what we're looking at is a detailed. Site plan, which is intended to reflect, I don't know, it's like a hundred and three or a hundred and five single family units, is that correct?
Correct, there's forty in subdivision A, there's forty-four in subdivision B, and there's nineteen in subdivision.
So a hundred and three, okay. So. So with respect to C, I'll call it the core. Okay. There are. Eighty or ninety-two or something like that. So there are ninety. I I guess, you know, my question is, how many, how many buildings, this is kind of small print?
Are you talking about C, Bob, the townhomes?
Yeah.
There's a hundred and ninety-two units.
Units, okay, so there are.
Plus, plus there's, there's fifty-eight units.
So there's there's forty-eight buildings, a hundred and ninety-two total. Fifty-eight times two, so it's a hundred and sixteen?
Correct.
So in in terms of this as a detailed site plan, is this what? A developer intends to to build there?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And with respect to E, that's to be determined, right? Concept or concept rather is some kind of senior assisted living or?
Yes, designated, it's designated in the concept plan to be an assisted living facility, so it has to be an assisted living facility. Or we'd have to go back and get the concept plan changed, which we don't intend to do.
Number, number of living units to be determined.
Correct.
I have a question. When Bob was referring to subdivision C, I see all the townhomes and way in the back are the two big buildings. Are those part of C?
Yes.
And those are going to be?
Four-story.
Apartments or?
Apartments, they're four-story multi, you know, multi-floor, so four, four floors, total of fifty-eight units in in each building.
Okay.
Doug, I think one of the requirements that we talked about, and I apologize with Jeff or was with through the emails, is the law requires you to show. A tabulation, obviously, of what you're proposing in the subdivisions, but also as it compares to the original concept plan. Is that in front of the planning board? So and I'm not talking about the January concept plan, I'm talking about the original concept plan.
Yes, that's, that's in this document that we sent it to the plans.
And does everybody have that document that shows the the differences?
Yeah, I think Bob sent it to everybody. Item number two.
Yes, it was number two.
South Point Core. Lines with the concept plan with the following modifications.
Right.
I can read it if you want.
It's up to the board members, I just want to make sure they're aware of it because. That's the, some of the changes that you're talking about.
Correct, I'll I'll go through them, I think it's important. I think it's important, so the mix of multifamily units was suggested to include two four-story units with fifty-eight each in lieu of the six-story seventy-two unit. Buildings that were in the concept plan from twenty twenty. The single-family attached dwellings from forty-five two and four unit buildings. Totally one sixty-four to forty-eight four-unit buildings totaling a hundred and ninety-two. So the mix is the same, I said that the total is the same, the mix is slightly different.
Right.
I was asked on a side note to take a look at the traffic impact of that. It's, it's, it's insignificant, but we can address it, it's a couple of cars. You know, it's three more cars out of a hundred and eighty-four feet. So we'll get a statement from the traffic people to say it's non-consequential as far as a level of service on the major intersections. So the other thing, we we revised the distance between the buildings from a target of twenty feet in the original concept plan to forty feet, that was one of the requests from this board. So we did do that, and then we revised the location of the multifamily units away from the single-family residential lots to the north end of Glen Avon. There's a concern there for the Glen Avon people to take that high rise and move it up to the north, which we did.
Oh, right, right.
And then we revised the multifamily, multifamily unit designed to include a proposed clubhouse, pool and dog park. The dog park was suggested by this board and the community center and pool would be an amenity for the, all of the people in the subdivision C. So that was a change from the concept, I didn't show that before. And because of that, you know, that was one of the main drivers why we have to redo the concept plan in strict accordance with the Grand Island ordinance. And then we included a private roadway connection to Glen Avon for either emergency or normally accessible access to the south. You've suggested normally access, there may be some pushback from the town board, but that's, that's between you guys.
I think we suggested that to be an old, because you were talking about a gate or something, I think we took that.
I mean, it's a.
We suggested not to do that.
Right, it's a road, I mean.
Right. It's up to the town board, they can make the final call.
Should get very little traffic there, some of the people that want to go down and use S H's or go to the. And then we modified the location of the sanitary pump lift station to on Staley Road, which will make it easier for the town to maintain, rather than putting it in the core area, as a request of the engineering department. Those are the, those are the highlights of the change. From the twenty twenty concept to the concept that you guys approved in twenty twenty.
Mr. Spitzer, some of the resolution. Refers to some legal issues and maps, are you comfortable with this being what we're talking about tonight?
In in parts of parts of it, what I went through was the letter that Doug was just reading through in detail to make sure that he checked off. Each of the items listed under the code section, and if you go down into his letter. The second part of it, where he has numbers one through fifteen, those correspond to the specific submittals to the planning board required for a detailed plan. To be honest, I'm a little confused about and of why I brought up about what Mr. Snide just read. Because it's got to be back to the original concept plan, not to the January plan. And I I I'm not, I'm a little confused if that's what it was too, is the January plan is not the original plan. The original plan is the only one that's ever been seen by the public, if you will, who we answer to. And the 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 concept plan revisions were great, you board did a great job with them, but it's, 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 the the differences are from what did the public approve? And it's a little confusing to me because they were, all the subdivisions had different names then. It was east, west, north and south, and now it's A, B, C and D. So I I I was having trouble, and I don't know if I'm the only one, basically comparing everything. The second part of it is. The second part of it is, when I went through is, you know, did they comply with the checklist? I am comfortable that they complied with everything on the checklist. In particular, Mr. Palumbo has provided my office, and particularly Beth Holden in my office, uh, the declarations, the easements, as was mentioned, there's some changes on, on the documents. But in terms of the requirement that they submit, um, one of the most important things, which was, I alluded to, was the town wanted the overall amenities, entities done first. So the walking trail was done first, it was a prudent fact, it's actually constructed at this point. So there was no concern as we've had with some other subdivisions where amenities were promised for the whole subdivision, you get to phase four, nobody's actually built them. This, this developer has done exactly what the original resolution required. So, um, that's a typical lawyer long answer, uh, Mr. Chairman. I, I, they have submitted everything that is required. Mr. Westfield, it's his job to determine that it's, it's complete. I've concurred with him that it's a complete application. What I'm still confused about is the difference between the original concept plan and this concept plan. And, you know, I had, I was the one who asked for the, uh, the traffic engineer's letter that there's no differences in terms of traffic flow. We don't have that yet. I believe that there are less impacts on wetlands than originally proposed, because we're now reserving more land. So to the extent that there are additional wetlands, we are still staying away from that. Uh, the open space is not decreased, that was very important to the community. So while there's been some things moved around, it mainly, as I see it, is less commercial than the original concept plan.
Yes.
Does that hopefully answer your question?
Yes, sir. And, and, and the original concept plan, I, to my knowledge, was from ninety-eight.
Okay.
But it's changed.
The, the second revised plan was adopted in twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, there was, there was ninety-eight, and it was two thousand thirteen approved by you and the town board. Twenty twenty approved by you and the town board. Twenty twenty-two approved by you, not yet approved by the town.
Well, what, what I'm getting at is some of us haven't been there here that long, so. Follow what you're saying.
The only thing that the town board hasn't approved, but you have, is the mix, the change in mix, right? Because we had the high-rises before, and everybody said no high-rises, or, or, you know, seven-story mid-rises. And then we added the dog park and the pool and the community center.
So, so, so in essence, in practical terms, what, what this all amounts to is I'll just call it a revised concept plan in tandem with a detailed site plan.
To the town board, correct.
To the town board, so the prudent thing. So, uh, I guess my question, uh, and maybe Dan, you can answer this, so maybe the prudent thing to do is to refer this back to the town board, so that the town board can schedule a public hearing to compare this to the concept plan that the public is aware of from twenty twenty.
So, um.
And, and then proceed, um, with an, an approval of, of, uh, the detailed site plan, I guess, subsequent to that, and then the town board can act on that basis. So that, that's really a statement and a question.
Yeah, so the, the town board referred it to itself when it came in. I looked at it along with these gentlemen, along with Mr. Westfall, and the, the code specifically says when you go to modify a concept plan, you can do it at the same time as the, um, uh, cons, as the detail plan. The detailed plans, by the time, um, they came in, really were actually already done. So there's no reason not to get this board's input on the detailed plan and have everything in front. There's no reason to have multiple, um, versions and, uh, multiple public hearings. So that's why it's all together with you here. But just to be very clear what's in front of you, they have submitted a detailed plan that has not been approved by anybody. You also have not seen the detailed plans. You saw a revised concept plan, which you recommended approval of with changes. You have not seen all of the changes, that's part of the testimony tonight. So you don't really have everything in front of you. Uh, but for the most part, what you've got, which the majority, which the guts of which is the five subdivisions, um, Mr. Westfield follows that those are complete and ready for you to start to comment on. And that's certainly the guts of the detailed plan, the subdivision aspect of it. Um, that, um, I think some of your questions have gone to, and some of the others. And you should take your time going through them. You're just seeing these probably for the first time, maybe last week you got the papers, but there's five subdivisions there. It's not easy, and some of them are specifically saying, well, everything's not, um, complete yet, we're not sure on the number of units. You may just wanna say, okay, we're gonna table that, those parts of this. Take your time and go through, but the subdivision review is not unlike what you normally would do with the subdivision, except you've got five of them. The detailed plans, um, need, need to follow along with, um, uh, the concept plan, and as of right now, what we, we're being told, it's almost there in, in terms of all of that. The town board will then deal with the, the, the non-conformity section all at once, and they're, they're trying to get it all, if you will, Bob, in, in terms of one public hearing and one complicated thing. That's why I'm sort of giving Doug a hard time and say, show me a table from the original plan, so I can share that with the public based on whatever comes out of this. Does that make sense?
Can we go over what's missing? You said that there were things that we, suggestions we made that are missing. Can we go over those things that are missing?
Sure, sure. If you could, if you offer change to turn to page three, which is subdivision A, I think that's the best one, we'll just start there. That's okay.
Yeah.
So, the third page of the eleven-by-seventeens is subdivision A, it's on the corner of Staley, sorry, Baseline and Love.
Okay.
So subdivision A is forty, single-family residential units, okay? About half of them are on, uh, Baseline and Love Road, okay? And, and the other half are.
Our internal.
Right, our internal, on, on a little cul-de-sac that goes up on right angle. Okay, the, what you asked for last month was to make sure that we included sidewalks on all of the subdivisions. We didn't show the actual sidewalks along Baseline Road and Love Road. We fully intend to put them on there, but they're not drawn. They're actually not drawn on the internal ones either. We usually don't draw to that level, preliminary flat.
So if we, if we took this one at a time, A, B, C, D and E, which is maybe the way we should do it.
That's what I'm suggesting.
You know, I guess, looking at this, uh, the frontages of the lots of front, rather, on Baseline and Love are in conformance, because I think originally they were intended to be, intended to be an R-one, D is in Bravo.
Correct, that, that, that zoning is still R-one B along the roads there, so the frontage and the depth had to conform with our, our one D, a major.
And the, and the internals are R-one D is in Delta?
Correct, they, they conform with an R-one D, but that's in the PDD, so they don't technically.
Okay, but I, I'm just saying from a site, uh, sizing.
Right, so that you can understand that it's like Waterford Park or, or any of them, it's beating foot frontage by a hundred and eighty.
So that even though this, this rendering doesn't show sidewalks, Love Baseline, we could, go ahead and suggest.
It's meant to include them.
It's intended.
So we can, we can approve it with that.
Recommendation on four, four A, okay.
Yes.
So I, I'd be in a position to, you know, put aid of that in, in, in just those terms.
And you should feel free to do this in a piecemeal way, if you wanted to, if you wanted to have a motion, Mr. Chairman, to uh, just deal with A, since that, that would make everybody's life easier.
And to append that, um, there are, uh, forty building lots in there, so that, uh, we recommend to the town board that they, uh, impose the, uh, you know, the standard recreation fee per lot, which is five hundred dollars, so that's a twenty thousand dollar. So that takes care of it.
Is that your motion now?
That's my motion.
So moved by Brad, discussion, Frank?
I have a question on you. Some of the last, uh, it seemed like, uh, you're not a buildable lot, and if the wetlands are, for example, the one that's labeled number three. Can you put a house there?
Yeah, number three, that, that line might be a little misleading, that's not a wetland line. That's a clearing line.
All those lines on there are clearing lines?
Most of them are clearing lines, correct.
Which ones are the wetlands?
Which lines are the wetlands? The darker ones?
Frank, if you look at this other one as well, it shows the potential placement of the homes.
Right, but what about the wetlands?
Well, I think the question is, are they jurisdictional or not?
If you look at the front page, it's a little easier. Yeah, because the front page doesn't have the clearing lines on. So if you look there, there's just, um, um, Baseline, there's one little small federal wetland between lots four and five, and then there's a larger one in the corner. So if you look, we, we oriented the lots such that we avoided those ones.
Okay, you're all set.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so what was your next?
No, what we have to vote on.
Oh.
Any other, any other questions on, on subdivision A?
I, just one question, are we dealing with the rec fees on each individual?
Yep, we're gonna do it all separately.
Yes. And I second Bob's motion.
We're already second. Any further discussion? All in favor? And you did mention, Bob did mention about the sidewalks, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we're done with A, let's go to B.
So it'd be the next page, page four, subdivision B. Yep, this is the one that comes after Car Road Stub. And there's three cul-de-sacs, and this is what we've shown from two thousand. The, the early concept plan had houses on the north side of that gas pipeline, which we, we told not to do. So we, we peeled it apart. But it's been this way, this was twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two. No real changes.
And there was no sidewalk issue on this one?
No, I mean, again, we, we're showing sidewalks in that subdivision.
So we're sure, so what were the, what were, what changes are missing then?
There were no changes.
Oh, there's no changes, no changes on B? Bob, you're gonna go for the motion back or?
And, and, and B, does this show sidewalks?
Well, we don't show the sidewalks on, on the flat plan, they don't normally show up there.
Okay, so my, my motion for B will be the same as the motion for A, and with respect also to, um, rec fees, uh, you know, imposed on a, on a per, per lot basis.
To include sidewalks and.
And to include sidewalks.
Sidewalks and rec fees. Second. So moves. Second by Brad. Any further discussion? All in favor? Two for two.
So, so the next page is subdivision C.
Page five, correct?
Correct, yes.
Doug, Doug, not to go out of, not to go out of whack here, but could we go to D instead? Because I think since it's a single family, it kind of mirrors.
Because I was just gonna walk, but that's fine.
So D will be.
We're going to D, page. This is on Staley Road?
Staley.
Correct, right.
Page seven. Okay, so this was again.
It's nineteen lots along Staley Road.
Right, and there was the question of the sidewalks.
Right.
And was this the section we were talking about, possible wetlands, the sidewalks couldn't be put in?
That is, that's, that's correct.
Okay.
So, and actually, on the previous one, between lots three and four, it's wetland there, where a sidewalk normally would go. So we may be able to get a sidewalk a little closer to the road and go around the wetland. We certainly could make that a requirement.
Precisely, what are you asking the town, though? Are you asking for them to approve what would normally require a sidewalk without a sidewalk?
No.
Or are you moving things?
It's just allowing us to have the variance to move that sidewalk around the federal wetlands.
So have you, okay, and again, Jeff's gonna correct me if I get the zoning wrong. Um, have you actually applied to the zoning board for a variance to not have sidewalks?
No.
No, he's.
No, I'm not suggesting.
Okay. He just wants to know where he can.
Well, in some, in some areas, there's a federal wetland.
Right.
Way where the sidewalk would typically go.
Okay, so he wants to put the Melso.
He wants to be able to move it to get around that wetland area, but not omit it.
Okay, and that's what I thought the answer was. So does that require a ZBA action, or can the planning board via the subdivision process agree to what's being asked for here? Okay.
Just a sidewalk location.
So, so.
Right.
Doug? So Doug?
I think that's through Bob, Bob Westfall.
Right, so, so Doug, on which, which lots, which number lots do the federal wetlands come into play in terms of, uh?
So if, if you look at the. If you look at the corner of Love and Baseline, right, that's federal wetland.
I'm, I'm on Staley.
Oh, Steve.
We're on page seven.
I don't see an issue on Staley.
So there's no issue on Staley?
No, not for D. No, the wetland extends to the west, actually, not in front of any, it's in front of the subdivision E.
Oh, so the wetland issue is on E, not on D?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so then, we asked for sidewalks in front of all those building lots, and is that going to connect to C as well? When, when C goes in, you'll have sidewalks go all the way out to Baseline or to Staley Road?
Correct, yes.
So they would connect there?
Yes, so you'd have sidewalk from one end of subdivision D to the other along Staley.
Okay.
And it would connect to the sidewalk that's in subdivision C.
So, so. Future development C would tie into those sidewalks.
Correct.
Okay.
Doug?
Yes.
To, to, on the sidewalks, you're having a problem with the wetlands. Can't you go back to the federal people and say, hey, uh, we're allowed a certain amount of exceptions?
It's really.
As long as it's less than so many acres, or we're gonna give you acres somewhere else, or whatever. So that the sidewalk can be straight, rather than, you know, weaving around to.
Well, as you know, sidewalks are put in by the individual developer, the person who builds the, the house in front of the house of that lot. You're required to put it in from property line to property line and connect. Right, the subdivider doesn't usually put the sidewalk in ahead of time, gets built with each lot.
Okay.
Generally, when, I'm a residential builder, so generally, when I go for my permit,
You gotta put.
They'll tell me where, hey Dave, you need so many feet to here, you need four-foot sidewalk. So in here, where you're running into some wetland issues, you'll have to work that out with Bob Westfall to how you're gonna lay that sidewalk up.
Right, the centenary decides.
Right.
Yeah, and your drawing has to match what the developer does, so you have a sidewalk going through a wetland.
We, we're not gonna show the sidewalk going through the wetland, Frank.
How would you show it?
Well, you can show it going around the wetland. But we're not gonna show it going through the law. We don't wanna fill the law. We've made a commitment not to do.
Okay, can I, I'm gonna back you up one sec.
Sure.
So, let's not lose our train of thought here.
Because we're not even.
So, so subdivision, is it B that's got the wetland issue for the sidewalk?
A.
A. Okay, so have we got, we haven't even, oh no, we got to A, okay.
A is already done.
Yeah, but.
Subdivision E has the issues with the wetlands for the sidewalk.
So if you look at subdivision A, right?
Right, right.
And, and if you look between lots, um, four and five, there's a hatch there.
Oh, okay, I see that.
That's wetland. So, you can see, normally the sidewalk is about eleven feet off the road right of way, plus or minus, typical subdivision. So we might have to move it a little closer to the property line to avoid the wetland.
Okay.
It's really, yeah, sort of like when you come over here with the little bridges, um, on, on, on Boulevard. Comes close to the road, goes back.
Doug, can I, I wanna clarify something.
Sure.
Spitzer here, between four and five.
Yep.
On page three.
Yep.
The wetland, is that this big piece that I'm seeing here?
Yes, sir.
So that is in the property line, or in, or in the right of way, or both?
It's in our, it's within.
It looks like part of the right of way is in the federal wetlands, is what I'm confused about, Doug.
The, the federal wetland is wholly within the property, from the way I'm looking at this, not looking back.
So this black line in front of that wetland is literally the property line.
Correct.
Okay.
And so there's room from the right of way line to the pavement, usually ten or twelve feet, but don't forget there's a ditch there too. So that'll all have to be worked out when the individual developer of that lot comes in for the building.
So as long as there are sidewalks, and, and as long as the sidewalks don't infringe on a federal wetland, if they diverge over onto private property, which in effect, I suppose would become part of the right of way then, right?
Well, what they may do is it may diverge onto the actual right of way, so the sidewalk may have an encroach on the right of way, which it, it does in many subdivisions.
Right of way or private property?
Right of way, not private property. There's no private property between these lots and the road.
Bob? Do we, we wanna go back and amend your motion, or add to that motion about a notation about him working it out with Bob Westfall at this lots, three and four with this wetland sidewalk location, or you're comfortable where you're at?
Well, you know. Well, you know, I guess I'm comfortable where I'm at because, you know, in terms of the technical workings of this, it still has to pass through engineering.
Right, you know, this is just preliminary plan.
Recommendation.
We still have another steps or stops.
You know, however they're constructed is a technical issue.
Okay.
That, that, that's right. This is not the final plat. This is the preliminary plat. And engineering obviously has some
Say.
work, some say and some work to do in terms of these issues, in terms of if, if, if it needs to be called out though, if the sidewalks are gonna be in the right of way and therefore reducing the right of way size in any way, as opposed to move, shifting the right of way.
Okay.
Okay.
So I don't think it will. And if you want, for the final, we could issue a detail of those particular lots to prove that we can get the sidewalk in without impacting the wetland or going into the red.
And that's basically this, that's something that the, I mean, the town board votes on the, the final plot obviously also, but you work that out with engineering between the preliminary and the final.
Okay.
I, I agree. I think Bob's probably got it covered then.
Okay, Doug, we're on.
So we're, we're.
We're on D.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion, Arlene, for the narrative on the motion. The narrative's the same as for A and B. Okay.
Or second.
For D.
Second for Bob's motion.
I'll second.
Second by Tim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're.
Page seven. Subdivision E.
Now we're, that was seven. Now we going back, Bob, or anyone to C and E last? How about, how about we go to C?
We wanna see.
Where C, what, what page is C?
C is page five.
Page five.
So we've got a hundred and ninety-two attached units and a hundred and sixteen apartments.
Correct. Now for this sub, for this preliminary plat, right? We're, we're, we're planning just the subdivision C. Oh, not the individual lots yet. We're showing them, but we don't have legal descriptions for each one of those yet. But they're, they're plotted on there so you can see them.
And they're all plotted with a separation of forty, forty feet?
The buildings have about, about a forty feet separation. That's the target. Now there's semi-regular ones, Bob, that are, the points are a little closer, but so it's not an absolute number.
Okay.
But it complies with our requirement last time.
Not, I don't have the same experience here as these folks do, Doug. I'm not used to seeing preliminary plats that have about forty feet. I'm used to seeing.
Well, you're used to seeing zoning, Dan, which is an absolute number, and this is, this is a PDD. So the way that the, the planning board approved it last time was about forty feet as it showed.
Okay.
But it was in specific language.
And they were, they were small, smaller and we asked you to up them and you did. You got as close as you could get.
Right, you were at twenty.
We were at twenty, we moved it to forty.
We're as close to forty as you could get.
Correct. There's a couple like the corner ones where the corners come together. At the street front, there's about fifty feet and back at the end, there's about thirty feet at the points. I think it's if you look, if you're coming off Staley there.
I see, I'm right here.
First left one there. I don't wanna pull you into thinking you've got an absolute minimum forty feet everywhere because you don't.
Because of the, because of the curve.
Because of the curve.
Right.
It's just that kinda.
That's understandable, right? And this is, this is all HOA.
Correct. And we're not asking for the individual lots. Yeah, that'll be next, the next time.
And do you depict the dog park and the pool?
Yeah, if you look, if you look.
That's in between the, the two four-story buildings and.
Okay, I got you. I see, Brad.
Yep.
I can't, I can't read it, but I can see it.
Right.
Well, Doug, Doug's question arises when, when you say about, is that like thirty-five rounded up? Forty is that, you know, to the nearest?
If you measure, if you go in the center, Bob?
Well, it's an awfully small, you know.
Well, you have, there's another pack of more detailed drawings.
What page, John, Tim?
It's in the other pile of drawings.
It's, it's this one.
Oh, the February twenty-second. Is that the one, Tim? Is that the one you were this guy?
The ones. So. So the, so Doug, the ones that run parallel to. Yeah, there's that forty feet there, forty feet there, forty feet there, forty feet there. There's a jog. See, if you look at those two points and measure, it's about thirty-five. In the front, it's about a hundred. Okay, so. So we average northern forty. I don't wanna say there's an absolute forty, you can say that's.
Okay.
If I remember right, when we asked you for more footage, you had, you did, am I correct to say that you actually put in less units to hit that forty-foot number from our January meeting?
Not from your January. This is the same plan as the January meeting.
Okay.
But the, before we changed the mix.
Right.
The road was much different.
Okay, yep, that's what I remember. Okay. Are we good?
Bob?
Just, just so everybody's clear on this, the, what you've submitted for the townhouses meets the requirements under the town subdivision law for preliminary plat. Because the PUD doesn't, by what we said before, the PUD doesn't change the subdivision. It incorporates them. So this meets the requirement of the town's subdivision ordinance for approval of a preliminary plat.
Correct.
Except for the forty feet.
Well, you're confusing subdivision and zoning.
Right.
Things.
That's right. So he can be smaller because that's a zoning requirement, like a setback that PUDs don't have unless the town board creates it as part of the resolution.
Right.
But the preliminary plat has certain requirements, mostly engineering requirements as to what's required to be shown on the plat, distances, lot sizes and the like, like, and that compliance is different than the size of the lots.
Correct. We showed.
Could you clarify again what you said about, and I'm probably saying this wrong, but the buildings are not finalized at this point and those will be approved later?
Yeah, for, for subdivision C, we're, we're asking to plat just the entire subdivision C, the outline of it. Not the individual lots yet.
So in other words, Doug, you could transform these individual buildings from four units to three or some other?
We don't intend to, just from a timing standpoint here. We don't have all of that information yet. We don't have the HOA done yet. We don't have, you know, all of the stuff that needs to be in subdivision C finalized. So we're not going for preliminary plat for subdivision for, for subdividing each of the individual lots within subdivision C.
Okay, so that.
Just carving it out.
So that any motion would not, would not include, at this point, a recommendation for rec fees, although we could hold that for the future when this is plotted in its final.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Or you cannot act at all and see at this point, the, the, the ordinance allows you to do things in phases. So what you can do is simply not address C tonight, because it's not really a preliminary plat stage. It's really your call, Bob, in terms of how comfortable you are with, with going forward, but you, you, if you don't feel like you have enough information to make a recommendation on the preliminary plat for C, you can hold off on that one. It doesn't hold up anything else. The law is very specific with PUDs that you can do it in phases, so it wouldn't hold up A, B, D and E.
The only thing I wanna just caution on, if you look at the next page, six. Page six shows the utility easements that go through C that we have to put in before we can do the other, before we can do.
Yeah, but you can put in utility easements anywhere on this property without getting it subdivided. I mean, Jeff knows how to do that and Jeff's actually prepared the easements, I think, for, to, to be dedicated to us and to the utilities. I don't think you need a preliminary plat to put in a utility easement. Jeff will correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're right. And he answered correctly what you said about moving forward phases. The reason that we're asking for what's on the outline for the section C is that it's been in the area that you know that we have to work moving. There's doing no downside to the town because we're compliant with these rules and the test departments and regulations. We understand, you don't have to do.
Well, the, the concern I have, to be honest with you, Jeff, is that you get to the public hearing phase and somebody says what goes in C and it, we say to be determined, that, then how do you know it's in conformity with the original concept plan? How do you know what the changes are? It, it's, it's kinda open-ended. And this board, you know, can do obviously what it wants, but I'm thinking also in terms of the, the town board, we have to put out a public hearing notice that indicates, among other things, the changes from the concept plan. And to the extent the number of units are in flux, I can't do that. So I'm just not sure that this board shouldn't get another shot at C before it goes to the town board.
They're saying the public hearing is required for just this approval that we're asking for for C tonight?
The, the public hearing is required for everything you're asking here for tonight. And, but you're allowed to do it in phases. And we've done it in phases. In fact, we talked about, we did the walking trail. And we did the, the other common amenities and that phase, if you will, is done. So if, if you did tonight, A, B, D and E, you could proceed to approval of those phases by the town board, including the amendment of the concept plan to the extent necessary, and you could hold off on C. And I am somewhat concerned that this board, this board, in my opinion, could certainly do what you just laid out and what Doug suggested. But I am concerned that it would need to come back to them before it's ready to go to the town board, because it's sort of up in the air.
I, I, again, I think in I think that the reason why I say that is because we are constrained with the number of units pursuant to the approval, so that they answered the first thing that the public would be unaware of what's the exact number is. We know the number because of the that's what we're allowing. But in the whole best thing, in the group. Why don't, there's no mystery as to what ultimately what tells the question of the arrangement of.
The time, certainly the time. The arrangement is pretty well locked in. We're not changing the arrangement. What you see there is the plan.
So, so there's, there, there's no question as to the number of physical.
No.
Which, which in this case is two hundred and ninety-five or something.
And I think in the past, we've done preliminary plat. Now, when you come back, we went, well, wait a minute, let's slide this building over three feet to hit that forty number. And I think we have done that in the past. Like when you first come off of Staley, those first four units and then the next four, those two front corners, we might say, hey, slide that first unit closer to Staley. We might say, we're good with it.
Sure.
But that's, can be done at the next step, really.
Absolutely. And for us to get to that detail, that would.
Right.
Can't quite.
Yeah, that's when you're really drawing this right out. I mean, right now, this is just preliminary plat.
It's pretty close. It's engineered. And Matt, maybe you can talk to that. But there is, there's definitely play there. When we come back to get your input on that, we could definitely.
I think we did that with, where Ryan is off of Whitehaven.
Yeah, we did.
We did. We had them. They come, they come in with preliminary plat. Then they come back, says, okay, these are what the building's gonna look like and the numbers between buildings were all there and we went, well, wait a minute, we don't like this one at thirty feet. We really want forty feet and we just slid the building, however we could work it out.
We could have.
We might not have made forty, we might have made thirty-eight, but we tried to get a little, as much as we could in separation. If that helps anybody here on the board.
What would be, what would be the extent of, or an example of a change that would result? I mean, is it just moving a building a couple feet or are you talking, we're gonna make, we're gonna put a four-unit building or two four-unit buildings into an eight-unit building?
No, that would be, the changes would be sliding buildings a little bit.
Right.
Because of a comment.
I think we addressed that last time, that you had smaller buildings and you went up. We can, we suggested that you go to the four unit, which is code.
Right.
And you did.
Yep.
So, so Doug, I've got a question here. I'm looking at a more detailed rendition of this.
Page John, Bob. What page, John?
Well, it's, it's, it's a detail.
Okay, gotcha. That's the second, second package.
Yeah, so.
Page.
So Doug, my, my question is on this.
Oh, yeah, they are too. Is there a number there, Bob, on the bottom? See something?
See, just says, see as far as I can see.
Drawing number, C four.
She one oh nine C.
She one oh five, one oh four, one oh six.
Oh, C one oh six C.
One oh six.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
So, so Doug, my question is, every other rendition?
One oh six. Yep.
C.
It's one oh six C.
It's, it's one that has a two, also has a two apartment buildings.
Yep.
So, so Doug, my question is, every other town home appears to have sidewalks in front of it. And these three do not.
Oh, I see.
Three.
So yeah, yeah, it's only on one side of the street.
Five and six.
Sidewalks in subdivision C are only on one side of the road. Remember, that's not a public road.
I understand that, but there's a drawing here that shows it, if I'm not mistaken, on both sides. This is also C one oh five C, but it's.
One oh five C.
One oh five. It's the page before the one we were just on. So we're showing sidewalks on, on both sides. The walls, well, with the exception of that one little cluster.
I don't see sidewalks on both sides.
I don't see sidewalks here, see sidewalks here, see sidewalks here.
Around that section.
Here.
There's no sidewalk on one side.
No sidewalk here.
That's because they're over here. See, they're on one side of the road only.
I see crosswalks over the place, the sidewalks on one side.
And the, and the big section.
Yeah, that was what was shown on the concept plan. That's what was requested from engineering.
Okay.
Just remember something members of the board. There's compliance with the code and then there's what the planning board wants. So if you think there needs to be sub, sub sidewalks, even if they're not required, your recommendation could say there shall be sidewalks there. That's, you have every right to do that if you want to. So it's not just have they submitted a plan that's in compliance with the subdivision law. It's what does this board feel is best for the community?
So if I could just speak to that a little bit about the sidewalks on one side. Originally, this was going to be public roadway in subdivision C way back two or three years ago. And town, engineering didn't want that to be public road. They wanted it to be a private road, so it was an association. And the other reason is, is the width, because of all of the wetlands in there, we negotiated to narrow that right of way a little bit. And to do that, we could only put sidewalk on one side. There's more to it though. It's not just sidewalks. It's being able to park a car in front of the driveway and keep it away from the sidewalk and keep it off the road. So based on the constraints of the site, that's what, you know, was negotiated with engineering. It's in what was shown on the concept plan with you guys. If you wanna change it, you're certainly, like Dan said, within your rights to do that. That would be a major change for the engineering role here.
Well, no, we understand that, or Jeff, I'm sorry, but, you know, the fact is, going back to the comprehensive plan and a lot of other discussions we've had over the years, notwithstanding the fact that I think every other town home plan in the town is saying sidewalks, okay? So you know, a, a lot of what we're doing, talking about currently going forward, again, has to do with walkability. And, and you know, I realize that at the end of the day, it changes this thing dimensionally as to where you're gonna put buildings and a lot of other things. In addition to the fact that if I'm on the side of the street without a sidewalk, I guess I wanna pay less for my condo or whatever.
You don't have to shovel the snow.
Well, somebody else.
Yeah, I have, I have no issue with the sidewalk on one side of the street. I, it makes perfect sense.
I'm sorry, Mr. Spock.
It's up to you what you wanna recommend.
It's.
Some sites don't work because of things like what? Some sites don't work because of things like wetlands and what, and, and engineering in good faith negotiated is, doesn't bind this board in terms of its recommendations.
Yeah, I have.
Well, I, I think I'm more concerned and I think that's been the, the idea is that want to be able to park in front of that garage.
Right.
And we don't want to have the car through the sidewalk.
Correct. And that's the way it's laid out. That's the way it should be laid out now. That's what our goal was.
And that was always the big concern when all this town home stuff came through.
All right, well, I'll, I'll back up a half step then. So how wide are these buildings intended to be here?
They're about thirty-eight feet wide, each unit.
So each unit is thirty-eight feet wide. So you could have a two-car garage, which might measure twenty-two feet and you still have about sixteen feet left over. So it's not all garage.
It's a lot of, if it's two-car, it's a lot of garage.
It's a lot of garage, but yeah.
It's all our single-family homes. Everybody wants three-car garage.
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, standard garage is twenty-two, twenty-two residential.
Just my wife's.
So sixty percent of the front elevation basically is, is a garage.
If they're two-car garage.
Yeah.
If it's a one-car garage.
The door isn't, but you know, the twenty-two feet is there.
Yeah, the door is sixteen feet. So from an elevation standpoint, sixteen out of the thirty-eight feet is going to be rational.
Seven sixteen.
Like, you know.
Typical, typical.
It's pretty typical.
Yeah.
I have no issue.
I'll back off.
I have no issue.
Are you making a motion?
I, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve. And are we going to talk about the rec fees at this point also?
Well, we, I mean, we can, but at the appropriate time.
Let's put it in now since we have on the, all the other ones.
Yeah, that's fine.
We're, we're missing nothing.
Motion to approve with the appropriate rec fees at the time of final approval.
Second?
Second.
Second by Sandy. Any other discussion?
Yes, please. Do we need to mention HOA? Or that was in our last.
Yeah, with, with all our previous recommendations. Including HOA. What else have you done?
The rest of it was all the sidewalk. It was about HOA, HOA only on this one.
Yep.
Okay, we're going to move out to a number. So we have to vote. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Any other discussion?
So I, we obviously amended that. Right, and added the HOA.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're going on to number E.
Subdivision E is basically one lot. It's a subdivided lot and that'll be subject to site plan at some point in the future.
So this is going to be, this is a proposed assisted living center.
So in other words, this is a concept at this point. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, we, we show it as proof of, proof that it can be built with the correct stormwater.
So, so all we're affirming, we're, we're making a motion on is the fact that we recognize this as a concept plan and
As you said last time, subdivision E will be addressed with the site plan as part of future submissions.
Well, I guess you just made my motion.
What exactly are you asking for permission for, for this?
We're just trying to subdivide the property off.
Okay.
Same thing as C.
Okay.
So does everybody understand that? So basically you're, if you make a motion, you're recommending approval of subdivision E.
As, as a concept.
Right, as a concept. Then engineering has said that, my understanding is that engineering has said that its submission on E meets the requirements of a preliminary plat. So that's all you're doing. So you're basically approving it as, recommending approval of it as a preliminary plat.
Okay.
And that's the motion.
That's our motion. You get it? Okay.
Second. So before you vote, if you don't mind, I have a question about the HOA aspect of this. This is, I didn't realize, assisted living. But the town law requires it to be no portion of private property in residential areas that is not covered by either an HOA or a private developer responsible for all aspects of it. I- i- is everything in E covered by the future owner of that assisted living? There's nothing that's common area. There's nothing that's sidewalks may retain. There's nothing that's HOA void, if you will, by adopting this.
No, there will be, that walking path is going to have to be an easement back, right?
And, and who's responsible for maintaining the walking path in E?
The owner of the property, which is associated with Grand Island LLC, until they create the homeowners association, then it'll be the homeowners.
So we really should include the HOA to the extent of the sidewalks within this approval recommendation. Now you see where I was going. We've included the HOA and all the others. There is a portion of E that does require HOA. So I would ask that the board consider adding that to the, to the resolution.
And that is sidewalks or the walking path?
It's the walking path, I think, that runs aside, because the owner of the building will have to take care of the sidewalks.
Okay, so Bob's motion is going to add in about the walking path.
The HOA will be, will be responsible for the walking path. If you're okay with that.
Yeah.
Did you catch that earlier?
Okay. Second, anyone?
Some moved.
Second by Brad. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You are all set, sir.
Did you guys do D? Did you do D, the one along Staley?
Yeah.
Okay.
We did. A, B, skip C, went to D, back to C, and then to E.
Perfect. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope we covered it all.
Um, I will probably come back to you with a resolution to confirm the conformity and the other things. As I mentioned, there's a table that has to be prepared between the, the first original concept plan and the second one. And that reflects what you did in January and tonight. And so we'll probably put together a resolution for your next meeting that we'll ask you to vote on. In the interim though, the board, the town board can schedule its public hearing.
Sure.
And not hold things up.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you all for putting up with me.
Thanks, Greg. That wasn't bad.
No, we're, we're good.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks for coming in. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move right on here. Island Meadow subdivision, phase three, revised preliminary plat.
Okay. Jeff Plumb from Barcley-Damon. I apologize for not standing.
I had to back to your
It's okay. You want to sit?
You want to sit?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead. Have a seat, please. To show. This was
Did you want me to go ahead or were you?
No, this was, so what are we doing? This was Bob Weaver's, correct, was?
This was Bob Weaver. It's now Forbes Capretto.
Okay, so which, what are we doing? You're changing just a couple, adding a couple of lots?
Yes, that's exactly what we're doing. The, the reason we're doing that is the, when this was originally approved, it was thought that the entire area that now will be consisting of two additional lots consisted of federal wetlands. And it's now been determined that they are not wetlands, so we are able to develop those lots. So essentially what we're asking to do is just amend the filed subdivision map as we have submitted. And we will refile with the two additional lots.
So the two additional lots were the old one and two?
That is correct.
And now that's going to be, does one stay as is?
No.
One gets shortened a little bit?
Exactly, exactly.
And then you've got another lot number. It's hard to see.
I don't have it in front of me. I apologize.
Eighteen, then two, then I don't know, I can't read it, maybe thirty-eight, then three. So it's right in that first one through three of the old map.
Correct.
That's right down here.
As you enter in on the right-hand side.
So those are, instead of three lots, there's going to be how many there?
Instead of two lots, you're going to end up with four.
Exactly.
Oh.
Instead of one and two, he's
Oh, okay, I see the change.
Yeah.
See it there?
Yeah.
Yeah, because really the old two was pretty big.
Correct.
Even three, even three.
Correct, because of the wetlands that were thought to be on it.
Okay.
Is, is lot, is lot three changing? Is, is lot three changing at all or is it just lots one and two that are being?
My recollection is it's one and two that were divided into.
Does that appear that three?
Right.
Doesn't look like three's changing.
Numbered something different, but other than that, I don't see.
Yeah, it's one and two that have been divided into four.
One and two is going to now be four lots.
Correct.
So we have three and three A.
The cover letter says lots two and three, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Right, because they renamed the old lot three A.
Is that what that is? I can't see, Brad.
That's what I think. That's what it looks like.
One.
So it was originally one and two.
One and two.
Yeah, one and one A, two A are the old one and two.
Okay, I said eighteen and thirty-eight. That's an A.
Well, that's an A. That's a three, that's a three, that's a three A?
Yep, gotcha.
Okay.
It looks like. Anyone have any questions?
What was the, what changed with the wetland? Was it the law, the way of delineating the wetland that changed?
Yeah, they, they were originally determined to be jurisdictional, but the court has indicated that they're non-regulated, isolated. So they're, they're no longer wetlands.
Okay.
Okay.
Which is a benefit to Mr. Capretto. It's additional two lots of this into the town with two additional homes.
Yep.
Yeah, I have, I have no problem with that.
Anyone else have any questions? Motion, Brad, maybe?
Well, I have a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve by Casey, were you trying to get me?
No.
Okay, so change rec fee?
Yeah.
Total.
Add, add two rec fees.
Two rec fees, right. Motion approved for two rec fees.
Oh, wait a second. Oh.
Go ahead, Cindy.
Ooh, I got this piece of paper here. It says, I don't know if this is for this. Have you paid the additional rec fees already?
Yes.
Okay, because yeah, that's what this little memo says here.
With the application for the amendment, Mr. Westfall was all over us to pay all the fees, so we, we did that.
So you've already paid the rec fees on the additional two lots?
Correct.
Well, we'll just mention it, just so that it's in there, but he says he's already paid them, so. Motion by Brad, second.
Second.
Second by Bob. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same here, sir.
Before you leave, I'm just curious. How did you get the court to change the wetland or any issue? It was basically the, it should have been regular, non-regulated to begin with, quite frankly.
Why?
Because it's isolated and not connected to navigable water, non-jurisdictional.
Okay.
And the court confirmed that.
Thank you, sir. Hope you feel better. Kristen. Come on up, Kristen. You're a thermal fisher, I believe. Before I even let you start. When they're coming in to do something, I think the building department is looking for a total site plan when you're adding something on, not just not showing the piece.
I did work closely with Mel, LeBron.
Okay.
And got him the site plan subsequent to this.
Okay.
And he did indicate that moving forward to why.
Okay.
There was no indication.
Yeah, I just wanted you to know that down the road, that's what they're, they're looking for.
And it does make sense.
Okay.
We were trying to cut down on, on the amount of paper and fusion and zoom in on one spot. So Yeah, so that on the second page at the top is a full site. So, so just for the record, Christmas of ours. I'm here with Jared Johnston from my office. Jared's a new engineer. You'll probably start seeing him more and more. So he's here with me and also Mark from Thermal Fisher. So just a quick overview. I know you're all very familiar with the site. I know you're all very familiar with the activities that are going on there. So what we have before you right now is a site plan for a new parking lot that will be constructed in what we're calling the northwest portion of the site. Some of the things that are different with this application than the last time that you saw something from Thermal are that, the first thing is, is that you'll notice in the seeker and in the other paperwork that the parcel size is larger than what you're used to seeing. That's because we have merged, or Thermal has merged the parcel on the north side of the street with the south side of the street. And now it's all one parcel. That needed to happen because we were getting to the limits of coverage for the building and other zoning things. So that was recommended the last time we came in with a site plan application. So when you look at seeker and you look at the percentages of land use and things, they're a little different than what you're used to seeing because of that reason. I just wanted to explain that the merging of the two parcels has happened and you're dealing with one parcel. So the reason that we're here tonight for the northwest parking lot is because the last time we were before the first full site plan was when we were here with AGT and Liquid North. We both came in as one site plan. They were two separate projects. AGT is under construction, as you know. It's on the west side of the building. It's approaching completion sometime later this year, beginning of next year. And now Thermal is going to be proceeding with what we're calling Liquid North. It's the northeast addition. And that northeast addition is already approved, already on, good to go and everything. But when they build that, if you recall, they're going to be displacing some parking spaces in that area. So it fast-tracked the need for parking in the northwest area. So because that area is already disturbed and it's ideally located, that's the area that they would like to put the parking to offset what we're losing with the Liquid North addition. In addition to all of that, as you know, because of COVID, because of the changing times and the changes in the pharmacy business on a regular basis, we are in a constant working relationship with the town and with other design consultants and with the Thermal team to identify what is the final plan moving forward for immediate future, for the use of space and the number of parking spaces that are needed. Who's moving over to Whitehaven Road? All of that is being investigated and will be before the board at some point in the future as a subsequent application and kind of a, an overall plan of what's coming. So that's down the road. We just wanted to let you know that we're working very closely with Thermal team, with other consultants and with town department heads to come up with a master plan down the road. I use the master plan term loosely, but it's just something to answer what is coming. So the parking lot is going in an already disturbed area. And it is shown on the plan with full drainage, speedist compliant design. The pond was, that it was constructed as part of the AGT building project, is sized appropriately to handle the impermeables from this area. That was done as part of AGT and Liquid North, as you recall, is we designed all of the infrastructure to support the future development that was being anticipated so that we didn't have to rebuild anything or tear anything out. So the infrastructure to support the parking lot is all in place except for a small bio-retention area that we're going to add in the middle of the parking lot and use that to bring some green space and some landscaping to this place. The parking lot itself is all the way to the northwest, so it leans to the rear. So we don't anticipate any impacts to the neighbors or anything like that with this project. And it will provide some relief for some of the parking that I know the town is concerned about. That's a quick overview.
Just to, just to remind me. When you came in to do this driveway, wasn't there a resonance here?
If there's a woman that, a family that lives there and the woman that lives there.
Is, is that the little square or is that just something else?
There's something else. Yeah, she's up to, they're up to the west a little bit. Actually, you know what? Dave, go to the cover page. You go to the cover page and you look at the aerial, you can see the house. Bottom left image on the cover page, the property is outlined in black.
Yup.
And the house is right there.
So Christian, uh, Kristen, when you say it's, it's already been disturbed, waiting for it to be disturbed.
So when we came in for, um, there was this area there that we tried to show this, uh, the little top pile area, things like that. And the contractor, uh, trailer yard and material storage area is back in there. In order, because the construction is gonna be going on for quite some time, when the contractor came in to put his trailers there and do lay down area, he prepped the area, so it's already got a gravel base, it's, it's got everything in place. We were boring on it to confirm that it's what we need, and we're just gonna utilize that moving forward. But because it wasn't shown as impervious on the original site plan, and it was put into the integrity thing for their destruction, you, the cloud felt, or Westfall felt it was important to come back for a site plan because it was gonna become a priority.
Wasn't this the section that they cleared out bec- at one point years back? This whole, wasn't that the five acre?
Yeah.
The five acre piece that got started? And then the driveway was the second thing that went in? So now when this house that we're, and I'm questioning, is that down in here? Or, or?
The house is, is on Stanley, it's, it's all the way down on Stanley Road. It's hard to tell from here on that energy with that.
Well, that was what you put the, that whole landscape thing in, wasn't it?
Yes.
Because of the house was here somewhere.
Yes, the house is right up there in the, on the, it's either, it's actually further down more.
This way?
Yeah.
So this turn is not close to the house?
No, and that turn is already in.
That this turn is already in?
Yep.
But when you're gonna go straight back, this intersection, I'll call it, the house is way down here.
Way down, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so it's not gonna affect them?
And they extended the firm already, uh, in anticipation of, of just the neighbors. That firm has already been extended further than what was originally proposed.
So it's farther back than where it is now?
Nope, what you're showing there is the as-built location and what was, and what is, was put in. Um, the original design had it backed, backed down a little bit.
Down here somewhere, if I remember right.
Yep.
And her property, this is all raw back there anyway on her.
It is, but that's not all her property. Her property ends.
Okay, I got you.
Actually, so.
Doesn't seem to do that.
If you go back to the cover sheet, the zoning map shows property lines. You can see the property lines on.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
Oh, yeah, I see, I see.
Okay, there is one parcel that matches their parcel that Thermal bought, and that's been merged and combined with everything.
So on the backside up in here, is that gonna bother this parcel?
No, it's all vacant. Ever, it's all woods. It's all woods back there. You're talking about north of this.
Yeah, I'm talking like this side and across the back.
It's all, it's all woods right now.
Okay.
Yep. And then you can sit on the air.
Go ahead, Frank, what do you got?
Well, you said something about the master plan, like the, what, buildings on Whitehaven, you used the word Whitehaven, what's going on in Whitehaven?
Well, some of the, um, some of the operations from Thermal were moved over to the Cannon Building.
Oh, that's Whitehaven?
Isn't that Whitehaven?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and I, and I think, as, as things progress. Yep, as things progress, we're just trying to nail down exactly what uses are going where and what the best uses spaces.
That's fine, I thought it was a new place.
New, no, not that I know of.
Wa- was there any thought of using the existing driveway and concrete that goes back to that area? Like, when it comes around that building under construction, like, in, instead of going through here, could you?
And utilizing the existing one?
Yeah.
Part of what we're trying to do is, we're trying to improve what's that are needed today, but not limit it us for future development. And that driveway there, uh, is a point in the future we'll likely have to go away because of an expansion to the building. So that is down the road, but that's why it's not gonna go there. We also are trying to get the trucks away from daily activities. We're seeing, um, a lot, a lot of difficulty for some of the truckers getting through the site, and we're mixing everything. So, you know, we're trying to keep the employees and the workers traveling in one area, partnering in one area, the construction in one area, and the trucks on the perimeter away from everything as much as possible.
Okay, thank you. Kristen, you, you mentioned percentage coverage with this. Approximately, where would they be with respect to impervious surfaces in terms of the total acreage that they own?
Um, I, it would be on the seeker form, but when I, the coverage that I was referring to, the zoning coverage only.
Okay, and that's what, uh, capped at what, thirty or thirty-five percent someone? Forty, okay.
As far as impervious on the whole set. Is that your question, or did you?
Yeah, because I don't think they're anywhere close to the forty on the buildings. Well, yeah. And now, now what they merge the property across the street out there, they're gonna need more.
Right.
I think the piece across the street's pretty big, isn't it, Kristen? Across the street. How many employees are there? It says nothing to do with the site plan per se, but how many employees are there that are employed at, uh, Thermal? Okay.
So acreage of total impervious, which is roads, buildings in any case surface.
Right.
Total is about eighteen acres.
Eighty-five.
How many acres?
Eighty-five, so about twenty percent, okay.
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 And that does include, a lot of people don't know, but standing water bodies, parcels are considered impervious. So that includes, if I include that, now we're at next.
Okay. Any other questions? Motion, anyone?
I'll make a motion.
Motion approved by Brad.
A second.
Second by Tim, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
You're all set, Kristen, thanks for coming in, hope to see you again. Okay, the next one is twenty-four eighty-seven Long Road Solar Array Project.
Hi, um, my name is Katie Socia, I'm here virtually, um, I'm not sure if you guys can hear me, okay?
Yup.
We can hear you, we can't see you.
Oh, there, there we go, can you guys see me?
Okay.
Hi, thank you so much. So, um, I'm actually a Buffalo local, um, so I'm sorry that I couldn't be there in person today, I'm a little under the weather, so, um, decided to join virtually, but hope to be at the next couple, um, in person. Um, I'm also here today with Tom Thompson, um, who's that gentleman, uh, standing up in front of you guys at the podium right now. Um, Tom is the, uh, landowner of the, uh, of the parcel in question that we're, um, talking about today. Um, and you guys, um, should have a little packet, um, that was, uh, printed out that we'd kind of just wanted to go through with you guys. Um, basically, we're here just to informally discuss the proposed solar project at Mr. Thompson's property, um, on Long Road. Um, Mr. Thompson and I have been working together and, and talking about this solar project, um, since two thousand and nineteen. Um, so quite a few years now, um, we've gone through and we've done a lot of work on this, um, parcel already. Um, and now that the new solar law is in effect and, and we know what that looks like, um, we're kind of ready to start the discussions of, of permitting and seeing what's possible here. Um, really, this parcel has a, a lot of pros to it. Um, most significantly, um, the, the parcel is already offset, um, from the road by a thousand, over a thousand feet. Um, so it's really going to be behind the National Grid substation, that's, that's already, um, there, and it's really not going to be seen by the road at all, which is great. Um, the parcel is also zoned M1, um, and it borders, um, a bunch of other M1 parcels, um, on the west side, um, along with, uh, the on-ramp for the one ninety. I'm sorry, was there a question?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm sorry, I was just asking.
Oh, no, no problem, I just wanted to make sure I could hear.
I'm sorry, I'm, we're listening to you, go ahead.
No, no problem, um, and, um, you know, directly south of the project site is that National Grid substation, which already exists there. Um, and then north of the site, um, is actually a, um, a major water line easement, um, as well. Um, so we think that this is a really good, non-intrusive site for solar, probably one of the, um, least intrusive sites that has been proposed to date on the island. Um, and what we'd like to do here, um, is get some clarification on a couple of things from you guys prior to going to, um, the zoning board. We know that this project is going to need a couple of variances, um, and, uh, really, that's just based on the neighbor that is north of the property. Um, the neighbor north of the property, it's actually owned by a park, and so it's considered, you know, a park and would need that five hundred foot setback. Um, unfortunately, with the five hundred foot setback here, that would, you know, pretty much eliminate solar from this site. We would maybe be looking at a, you know, two, two to five hundred kilowatt site, um, if that five hundred foot setback from the park edge, um, was enforced. And again, just, um, for clarification, that park edge is also that major water line easement as well, so it's not active park area, um, to my understanding. Um, Mr. Thompson and I had met with, um, Supervisor Whitney and Bob Westfall, um, about two weeks ago, and they suggested that we come before you guys today to kind of talk about that issue, um, along with another potential issue um, that Bob Westfall, um, had spotted. Um, as you can see, there is a neighbor, um, there's that, uh, home that's set very far back there, um, on Long Road, and we have five hundred feet, um, setback to code with that home right now. But what you can't see on this map is that there are, um, subdiv- divided lots kind of all along that edge as well. And they're not active, they've been some, subdivided for some time, but there's always a chance that something could potentially happen there. Um, and so we want to talk about what is, you know, a setback for the future of that area. Um, this is again, already a thou- you know, over a thousand feet offset the road, but the code doesn't really talk about that at all. Um, and so we'd also like, you know, the, the board's input today on that. And, and then the last thing that we'd be asking for clarification on is that, um, one ninety ramp. Um, we, we don't consider it a road, I know Supervisor Whitney doesn't consider it a road, um, but again, we just want clarification that, that, you know, that you interpreted as not being a road, so that we can, um, you know, appropriately, um, you know, claim that our site plan is not seeking a variance there as well.
Okay, so the, the person that you're talking about, where you're five hundred feet from that lone house, all the way back there?
Correct, yes.
There is, there is an approved subdivision that goes all the way around that house, and that property actually was just sold and is going to be developed. So if you notice, there's a big for sale sign out front and it says sold on it, that property, that whole subdivision was just sold. And they are planning on building that out. So I don't know how many, what, what land impact is back there, I don't know how many lots are actually going to be able to be done, but I do know that property was just sold. So what you're seeing on your, on your map is those subdivided lots, that is, that is approved, and that will be moving forward at some point.
That subdivision is eleven, approximately nine, eleven lots, something like that, that runs down the west side of the property line there.
From what I understand, it's actually goes all the way around at the first, the first eleven or so. I, I, I don't know, because I haven't seen it in front of me, but when the property was marketed for sale, it showed the whole thing being developed out. You know, what was available to do is, I, I don't know what's been approved and what hasn't been approved.
So there's, um, a few lots that are already pre-subdivided in that area that go right about to where that house is, um, back there. That's kind of where they end, then there's a much larger parcel that kind of wraps around that house area that, to my understanding, has not been subdivided yet, um, but, you know, potentially could be. Um, also, the, some of the work that we've done on this parcel to date, um, I know that, and, uh, Mr. Thompson's property, at least there are significant federal wetlands. Um, we know that they do flow into the neighboring property, I just, you know, we obviously didn't survey it, so I'm not sure to what extent, but I know on the property that we are looking at, there are federal wetlands all over that area.
Right, and like I said, I don't know the impact of those wetlands on that development, but I do know that the plans were to go all the way around that existing home. As a matter of fact, when they do that, they have to bring in a new access road, so that temporary access road that's in there right now will be removed and the new road will go to the west of that home.
But my, my understanding, and this, and this is a matter of public record, by the way, in terms of the sale of that property, which occurred in September of last year, uh, in its entirety, it's over thirty acres, including those ten or eleven subdivided lots and, and the area that wraps around that single-family home. Uh, that entire aggregation was sold for six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, or about twenty thousand dollars an acre, which, um, I don't know if anybody is gonna buy land unimproved on Grand Island for twenty thousand bucks an acre without some plan in mind, whatever the plan is, and it's not been filed. The only thing we do know is that there's a map cover, obviously, for those ten or eleven lots that go back from, from, uh, from, from Long Road, and, and, and I think they're.
Right, but that was just sold, so like I said, somebody had just bought that.
Understood.
They're developing that, so.
Right, but, um, you know, from, from a legal perspective, one could argue that it's first come, first served, uh, and to differentiate this from the PDD called Whitehaven Farms, I think it is, and Sunrise LLC, which Whitehaven Farms is an approved PDD, which, uh, has been preliminary platted and so on, that's a whole nother topic, but, um, the point is that the thirty-some acres, whatever the new owner's intention is, is, has not been, uh, made public yet, so, you know, we, we know it's R1. Well, I'm not sure whether it's, I, I think it's R1D according to the zoning laws, uh. But, um, yeah, I've, I've got a couple of comments, um, first of all, as I think most of us know, uh, the town via committee, which included, uh, different stakeholders, including representatives of the Solar Development Committee, citizens at large, members of the town board and so forth, spent about nine or ten months uh, formulating the new solar law, which includes, by the way, uh, a limitation that the facility, which is everything within the fence, that's fenced for the solar panels, not exceed sixty percent of the total acreage, so I think this is, your acreage is about twenty-two. Sixty percent's about thirteen acres, I don't know how many acres you have planned, but, uh, I think it's more than sixty percent, so, um, you know, a couple other points, uh, is it Katie? I'm sorry, Katie?
Yes, Katie, yep.
Yeah, Katie. Um, you know, you're right about the, the less than five hundred feet from the park, and of course, there's a water line. He's been, I'm not sure whose property the water line's on, but certainly what's mapped on an aerial, uh, looks to be, um, well short of five hundred feet. The other thing is Supervisor Whitney's opinion notwithstanding about what is a road. In other words, you know, the ramp to the I-190, um, he's saying is not a road, uh, to me, anything that is paved and you can drive a registered vehicle on is a road. You know, if it looks like a duck, quacks like a duck, walks like a duck, it's a duck. If it's paved, you can drive a motor vehicle on it that's registered, it's a road, and, um, so, um, you know, with, with those three things in mind, and, um, you know, the fact that, uh, the town spent about ten months formulating a solar law. Okay.
It was specifically meant to, uh, I think, uh, slow down the process of solar, I'm hearing that.
Well, whatever it was.
I, you know, I, I listened to a lot of that stuff, it was sad, I, I.
I, I listened to a lot of that stuff. It was sad. I, I had some input. But it seemed to just get stirred off in one direction. That's my opinion.
Well.
And, you know, there was a solar law, in effect, at the time, that solar law was brought in, and it was basically not just to change that solar law to something more similar to what Lewiston had. Which was basically, in my opinion, not, you, you, you won't be putting in the solar such that you're in. The only one that might go forth would be one that the schools got in process right now, so.
Well, I, I, I'd like to point out, the new, and you're right, I was on the first committee.
Yeah.
The first solar law.
Yeah.
And this is the third one.
Yep.
296, what, what was her name again?
Katie.
Katie, 296 dash eight E3. Says a setback of 500 feet from any inhabited residence or residential primary structure. Or sensitive visual receptor on adjoining lots. I, I don't really understand what sensual, this sensitive visual receptor is.
Sensible visual uh, receptor are these two things.
Okay, so that particular part of the code. From an inhabited resident, if there is homes going to be on that parcel, they're not there. And the one that's there that you're showing meets the 500 foot setback. So, uh, I mean, who's first? Do you know what, that's what I'm getting at. Like, I understand this fellow that bought this property is going to develop it, but I kind of think you were first.
Well, that's, I guess, what we're.
They're gonna have a power generation plant that's already existing in their backyard.
Mm-hmm.
And that's less than 500 feet.
So I, I just wanted to make that point, that's all.
And I did this, I did this, I, I, I made the motion, I didn't carry, but I made the motion on the one on Whitehaven in front of the Fox Tower.
Which is against an actual PDD. But uh, right at this part, at this point, they're just farming the property. Again, who's first? You know, there isn't any homes built there or, or the one on Whitehaven.
Dave, Dave, let, let's set aside one thing here for, for the moment, that parcel on Whitehaven. Uh, and first of all, getting back to something Katie said, Katie, this is not simply a matter of a variance, because any solar farm on Grand Island is subject to a s- a special use permit. And um, so, you know, you, you mentioned going before the zoning board, which I assume you meant the zoning board of appeals. First of all, if a special use permit is not issued, which is a matter of the legislative body, i.e. the town board, acting to allow a special use permit, there is no solar farm.
Understood. However, I think in order to even get to that point of talking about what they're approving in terms of the site plan and, and how big it is and what that looks like. We need to understand what variances would be approved. Um, as I mentioned, um, the park to the north of it. Um, you know, if, i- if we, as for example, were, you know, if the 500 foot setback was enforced there, there essentially wouldn't be a solar project to talk about, right? Because we would be talking about something that would only be between 200 and 500 um, kilowatts, and that would be much, much different than what we're trying to propose now. So understood that this needs to go through um, special use permit um, procedures for sure, but also I think we need to understand if the ZBA would even approve variances. Um, and, and what those would look like, so we could appropriately put together the site plan for you.
Well, 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 again, um, going before the ZBA to talk about variances, I think is a bit of the cart before the horse. And again, getting back to what um, the town board approved as a solar land, regardless of how one interprets what a road is. Or what a park is. A park, by the way, is anything that uh, the public can uh, utilize, whether it's active or passive. Whoever it's controlled by, can be a private park, can be a public park.
That's Buckhorn.
All those, all those things come into play with respect to approving a special use permit to begin with. So, you know, there are three criteria. Uh, that uh, on their face, faces don't come close to uh, uh, to conforming. Distance from a park, distance from a road, and uh, percentage coverage of the facility.
I understand. I think that um, you know, this is a very good location for the solar, right? If you actually look at who the neighbors are here, and the fact that it's right next to the National Grid substation. And that it's, you know, over a thousand feet away from the road. Um, if this board's recommendation is to go before the town board to discuss a special use permit prior to going before a ZBA. That's certainly something that we're, we're open to. It's not the usual process that I followed with other municipalities in the past. Um, but certainly happy to, to follow that, that route, if that's what you recommend.
Well, that's the process we follow.
Understood.
And, and the, and that road that you're talking about to the west, that's the on-ramp for the 190?
Yes.
I, I mean, code does say 400 feet from any public road. But I mean, that's the on-ramp for the highways. I don't, I don't.
It doesn't matter if there's a house there. It says public road. And then the other one is 200, what is that? 220 feet, that's from, that's from West River Road or Eastern, what is that, where that road is there? Right?
That's going through Buckhorn.
That's going through Buckhorn, and right.
Through the State Park.
And right behind that is the walking trails. That is very active.
I mean, you're gonna have to look into this a little deeper, I think. You know, for the setbacks with the law and, and what avenue you're gonna want to take to try to move forward. I mean, I'm, I'm not against solar at all. Like I said, I was on the original committee for the original law, and I even didn't want the decommissioning program, and it actually got turned down at that point. I see it's back in here now, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any problem with it there either. I, i- if this, which I believe is all wetlands, the, behind that house on the the north side of that house. Because I know that when Sticko was developing all this, this land was available, and he was obviously been buying. And he didn't even make it anywhere.
Well. Councilman Marsden's here.
Percentage facility coverage.
Well, this isn't even here for approvals or recommend.
No.
This isn't here for any of it.
Well, we, we, we voiced them. Yeah, I mean, there, there's no, there's no.
You're gonna get it in our minutes.
No motion required.
Beyond the minutes, so uh, I think at this point, you need to listen to what we've mentioned and go back to the town and try to see how you can move this forward.
Okay, under- understood. Thank you guys for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Hope to see you again.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next is communications received and filed. Unfinished business. 871 Whitehaven. The developers or the architects here?
Yes, this is uh, Dan Leary with Grand Island Sunrise. I'm here virtually, and Jason Burford uh, with GPI, our lead engineers there.
Okay, uh, Dan is doing the uh, address, we're basically here to address the items that were brought up at the last meeting last month. Received, hopefully the packets we sent in about 10 days ago, I'm not sure if we had time to review it. Uh, but revised plans, additional exhibits.
I don't have any. I don't have anyone. Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, okay.
Okay, so we're gonna have, I'm pretty sure we're familiar with what we talked about last time.
Mm-hmm.
So you wanted to address those comments.
Sure.
So let's, let's start with that.
Yeah, uh, Dan, would you like to?
Yeah, sure. Um, it, it sounds like, I'm not sure if there's the visual renderings are in front of everybody, but uh, they could be pulled up. Um, but hopefully, everybody has a copy of those, both hard copy uh, as well as soft copies that were sent. But we wanted to address the um, the comments about updated uh, visual renderings and screening um, from our last meeting last month. The, you know, both in terms of like, what it would look like at the time of construction, two years and five years um, from different um, cardinal directional points. The um, updated the plans, um, we'd gotten those in just before the last meeting, but um, you should have all those um, with the AC DC sizing disconnect that we had. We've also taken the comments that the board made regarding the PPD that's adjacent to us. And have presented now um, alternative uh, additional screening um, along our eastern border and southern border that abuts the PPD um, as additional screening um, depending on kind of where that development uh, goes. And address the, we, we can talk about the lighting comments um, that were, were brought up by one of the board members. And we also, uh, as the board recommended, um, we did make uh, uh, communication uh, and connect with the, the property owner um, of the PPD and have um, you know, had a, a couple of conversations with them, um, have shared our plans, both in terms of uh, visual uh, renderings that you guys have in front of you, as well as kind of um, the solar designs, um, to kind of start a discussion with them. Um, and have their awareness on kind of what we're planning to do and what we can do to accommodate um, any visual uh, impact that they may perceive um, for any future homes. Um, but uh, Jason can take us through this, but yeah, we, we feel that um, we, we have a good site um, that fits the law as it's written today. That's going to kind of provide a lot of stakeholders. We're, we're trying to kind of make sure that um, we can accommodate all the stakeholders. You know, the town, um, you know, is going to get utilized kind of more property tax value out of something um, that's otherwise not being utilized. Um, without you taking up any municipal resources. You know, we're not looking for water, sewer, um, you know, public roads. Um, you know, we're not sending kids to school. And, you know, kind of providing value to the ratepayers, because this is community solar. Um, you've got locals that want to participate in solar, recognize the savings immediately um, without having to put the investment on, you know, solar on their own homes, if they can't uh, for any number of reasons, or small businesses that can't afford to do so either, uh, can still participate. This is a temporary solar installation. You know, we have a decommissioning bond that'll name the town, and therefore have the assurances that this thing will be removed. Um, it's, you know, going to ha- allow the, the soils in the ground to kind of sit, um, you know, regenerate themselves. And yeah, we just think that, like, you know, this, this project fits, and we're, we're, we're here to continue the discussion um, based on your feedback, based on the update that you gave us about the PPD next to us. And in addition to that, we, we also saw an opportunity to potentially add a little bit more value to the town um, because of the scenic woods to the north of our, our parcel. You know, that we could add a, a connector trail from Whitehaven Road all the way back to the scenic roads in the back um, behind us. Um, that now allows, you know, the communities along Whitehaven Road uh, to have just as easy as, as a walking access back to those roads um, as well, um, along, along the west side of our uh, uh, solar array. So um, Jason, if you want to kind of get into the, the specifics of the, 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 the updated screening and the setbacks. We're happy to kind of take discussions and questions.
Sure. Fortunately, you shall have material to sense, uh, but what we included was specifically uh, an exhibit for the signage. Where would be located, um, the specific signage detailed through show attention. Including the entrance, which was the uh, owner's signage. Uh, the aerials that uh, Dan mentioned, and the view impacts, I guess we could call it. We sent him copies of all this. This shows an aerial view from the southwest, uh, looking at the solar array. Also highlighting, we have added additional screening along the entire east side and the north side. Or south side of the array, but the north property line of the PPD. Also, the view impacts showing current view uh, from the existing neighbor, the occupied residence. Existing view, two years down the road, eventually five years down the road. As you can see, uh, you can't see the solar rate in any of these, not even a current situation. So uh, the neighbor, the existing neighbor. This is a view from the road. Specifically show the uh, utility pole connections, so you can see how that looks. Uh, we also show the improved access road uh, that we'll be making wider in comparison to the current road. Uh, and then again, the impact, uh, the visual impact of five years down the road, uh, the trees, et cetera, that we'll be planting. As part of the screening. Finally, the uh, view from the west, uh, from the adjoining uh, TV tower uh, location. Uh, this is from their parking lot. Uh, we have not put any landscape screening here. Quite honestly, we wonder about the need for it, uh, for this abandoned uh, building here that houses a bunch of equipment in the parking lot. But still, uh, again, the views fair amount of scrub brush ranging anywhere from six to eight feet tall. Uh, before it gets to the roadway, before again, it gets to the fence and then the solar array.
So what were your discussions with the owners of the approved PDB?
Uh, our discussions were basically how we were gonna address the screening of that area. Uh, that's why we added the additional.
Let me hold you up. We generally don't let the public speak, since he's not the applicant, but if the board would like to hear what he has to say, let's make a motion to let him speak. He's not the applicant, he's the PDD representative. So generally, we do.
I'll make a motion to hear what he has to say, that's.
Second. All, all in favor?
I.
I.
Okay, sir.
Good evening. Uh, my name is William Tine. I'm from David Holmes, and we own the PDB. We were not the original developers of Ransom Oaks, as you know. Uh, we purchased Whitehaven Farms from the original developer. I think you know what the plan is. If you want to see it, I have a copy of the, the PDF of it, but the entire parcel is to be subdivided. And so it goes very much to your conversation on the earlier array on Long. And the idea of who's here first. So this is a project that has been approved as a development for the entire parcel. The first phase is fully engineered and is a preliminary plat. We have spoken with Mr. Leary. He did reach out to us, and we've had, um, just made contact. We have not had a meeting yet. Um, it's difficult. I'm trying to get uh, Mr. Leary and Mr. Stapleton together to sit down and have a conversation. But in all candor, we, and Mr. Leary is aware of this, we have serious concerns. We're already trying to build and sell houses in the shadow of an 1100 foot television transmission tower. And I think, you know, that's not a real big selling feature. Um, and I don't think any of us at David Holmes believe that the solar array is either. So we have concerns and reservations. We also are looking at doing a much more comprehensive project. We have quite a bit of land that we picked up from Mr. Guback, and we're looking at. From Mr. Guback and we're looking at the entire comprehensive issue of how to tie scenic woods. Into the development pattern of Ransom Oaks where we're developing now, we're building now over at the Gulf Villas portion. We have property across the street. We have the Whitehaven Farms piece. We're trying to tie all of these together. And what we would like to see is that the scenic woods has a trail system which comes through. The peninsula, then down through Whitehaven Farms, out to Whitehaven. Has a system that goes down along Whitehaven, back up East River Road and circulates back into scenic woods. So we're looking at trying to have a very big comprehensive vision for this and do something that the town is really proud of. We are as well, and we're trying to, to advance that and we're really not looking to step on landmines as we're trying to get this thing through. We're always willing to listen. We appreciate the effort that the petitioners have put forward already attempting to put landscaping in. But this is not something we expected. And I think that it's pretty clear that what the town put into code demonstrates that. Someone, when they were devising this code, had similar concerns or they wouldn't have put a five hundred foot buffer in from occupied residences. And it's true, we don't have occupied residences yet. We haven't built a house on this property yet. We didn't buy it not to build houses. We bought a development that had approvals with the intention of building it. So that's where we stand. We fully expect to build houses on it and those lots along that our west property lines, the common line, their east line, those lots are a hundred and forty feet deep. I understand the issues that they have. We're willing to talk, we're willing to listen and see if we can find some common ground, but it would be. Disingenuous for me to say that we don't have concerns and reservations about this proposal. This isn't something we expected to see coming before us.
What, when was your, you've mentioned you had first preliminary plat. When was that?
I don't have the dates. I tried to pull all that stuff up while I said. Thank you.
And, and the permitting has, has been renewed on schedule since that time.
The sewer, sewer and water permits.
I'm sorry.
Sewer and water.
Well, whatever the permitting process is to.
To keep, to keep that PDB alive.
Comply with, with the.
Keep a PDD live. You need to do some physical work on the site.
The point is that they've updated it on a continual basis. The point is. They have utilized the land by the way that farm, somebody's farm land.
We are.
On a lease basis, I assume.
Exactly.
But that, that's a whole, you know, other matter. The point is, gets back to special use permitting, which as we know, again. Anything that's a solar farm has to be approved by a special use. And it has to be compatible with the surrounding area and planned uses. Plan use in this case. You know, is indeed the PDD that exists. And the fact is that probably, I don't know, eighteen or twenty of those parcels on the west side, the north side of that PDD. Are contiguous to where the solar farm would be sited. And would be far less than five hundred feet, probably.
Well, yeah, they, the plan showed fifty.
Well, fifty feet from, from their lot line.
From their rear facility to the solar.
Boundary, which is the fence, the fences, the solar, then, but if you look at. The parcels that are plotted on that PDD, you know, they might be hundred eighty, hundred ninety feet deep, whatever.
Hundred and forty on the, on the west.
For the, for the building is probably within eighty or a hundred feet or whatever of the lot line. Maybe a hundred twenty-five feet.
Sixty probably.
From the solar installation.
Can I ask you when you purchased the property?
Same thing. I tried to pull up the tax records right here and it's giving me an error code from the Erie County site right now. It won't pull up the, the.
Rough idea. Two years.
It was before my time at David Holmes. I can tell you that. I don't. Year and a half.
Are you, is David, David Holmes or some LLC?
He's got an LLC.
Well, let me ask you this. Is it, is it deeded to that LLC?
Yes.
Well, if you say yes, can you show us?
Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully, respectfully like to get the applicant back at the microphone.
Okay.
Rather than, no disrespect to anybody.
Anyone else have any PDD?
Really? Other questions, would you really feel is important?
Okay, I mean, we.
Yep.
He's addressed that they have major concerns about it. So that's.
Your backup, sir. Thank you wherever he wants. Thank you, sir.
No disrespect.
David Holmes.
Yeah, no, just to address a couple of the items that were brought up by Mr. Time. I think it's important to note that we're looking at a limited use time period for this solar race. It's a twenty year lifespan. So at the rate that things have gone, as far as development of this property. They have approval for sanitary and water for the phase one portion. That can be pulled at any time and they could start construction on that. The balance of the site has not been fully engineered, has not received utility approvals. Which is what we're looking at. From their first phase property, we're somewhere in the neighborhood of five to six hundred feet. From the phase one buildings. So that's just to give kind of a time, you know, where we are now, where we're going to be for. The foreseeable future. As far as setbacks and affecting any further development on that eastern side of our property. And I think we can go back to addressing a little bit about the traditional landscapes. It's good to note that. Definitely by the time anything happens anywhere near that property, that landscaping will be fully grown, ten to twelve feet tall. To provide a very thick visual screen to any properties that are built. The eastern side of the solar array. We also, Mr. Leary mentioned. We also had a conversation with the town about, you know, an access to the scenic woods. Park system. So we have a plan. Have proposed. All on the property here with each Mr. Town that will be. Access from Whitehaven Road and the developments across the street, all the way back to the scenic woods trail system. So a reasonable would be granted to the town and there would be just a split rail separation between the current access road. Roughly, roughly twenty-five feet off of existing driveway. So we have that interest that would be part of the solar development. Which would mean that we need to build it now, build it now and give access to the scenic woods parcel. So we've addressed the signage. We addressed the additional landscape buffer. We've added the nature trail connection. We've got the visual impact. Currently, two years down the road, five years down the road is required. Actually, that's going to be reviewed by a consultation board. So, and then, quite honestly, the other thing that was brought up was lighting. Code specifically calls out for minimal lighting. Which what we're proposing is zero light, emergency lighting, because when it is dark outside, there is no energy being generated by this facility. So there's not going to be any emergencies to the facility as far as an operational emergency. So to add lighting in addition would be outside the particular scope of the development of this solar array. Any similar solar array will not have lighting because then what it does requires a whole separate service to be brought in just for. What would be very minimal lighting, if at all. So we're trying to gear it towards what the code calls out as minimal lighting. You can't get anywhere minimal than proposing no lighting on the project.
So, so you feel that no lighting would cover this in the code? Two ninety-six B and lighting of the solar system shall be limited. To that minimally required for safety and operational purposes.
Right.
So if there was some problem at nighttime. And I guess. Wouldn't you need something?
The question becomes what, what problem or operational problem?
The, the system is de-energized in the evening.
Okay. I, I have one.
I have no idea. It could be anything. Who knows?
Yeah, what if somebody got back there and climbed the fence and got hurt or something?
Yeah, and unfortunately.
Right.
We wouldn't have lighting.
Okay. Could, can I ask you a different question if I may? In your experience, if you have a solar farm and my home is save a hundred feet. Away from your fence line, no way second, is the fence line fifty feet away from the panels?
The fence line is about fifteen to twenty feet away from the.
And then fifty feet from the fence to the property line? So roughly a hundred and, let's say fifteen feet. Is there any issue that there would be glare off of the panels that would cause harm to my two-story site at home?
I could speak to this. In, in.
In your experience?
No, not in my experience. The, the type of panels that we're putting in here are photovoltaics, polycrystalline solar panels. They are, polycrystalline is the blue panel. You kind of see that, that the square is whenever you see a solar panel. That's what's doing the work when photons hit it and collecting electrons. On top of that, there's anti-reflective glass. So the whole purpose is to absorb as much and reflect as least amount of light as possible with solar panels. We do, including this project, we do a full reflectivity and glare analysis for the FAA on every single project. And it gets sent to the FAA. We'd be happy to kind of provide that full analysis to you guys for the board to read that. But solar panels of the type that we're installing here and frankly, most of the type that's installed across New York state. Are anti-reflective in nature and, you know, kind of fall on the very, very low end of the spectrum of reflectivity in the analysis. Furthermore, these panels that we're proposing here are on a tracker system. So the rows run north and south. And then the panels themselves throughout the day tilt from a forty-five, roughly a forty-five degree in the west. And then they are in the east and they track the sun to the west as it goes throughout the day. So the, the panels kind of face east to west as opposed to a fixed tilt system. Which you may have seen where the panels are just positioned at, you know, twenty to thirty degrees tilted angle facing directly south to optimize their sun intake. This system, the panels will not be facing south, therefore like they would not be facing, you know, kind of, you know, the homes or anything like that directly below us. In addition to obviously, their, their height is eight to ten feet. And so we have, you know, fencing that's going to be seven feet in height per electrical code. And then we have beyond that, we're going to have screening per the code that has to be. At the height or greater than the solar panels within the first two years. And then obviously that'll, that'll continue to grow. So properly screened both per code as well as kind of like to accommodate any visual impact, you know, we may have to, to future residents kind of in the, in the area.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any other questions? Okay, they're actually here for site plan and special use permit application. Anyone have a motion?
I, I, I just can't.
Any discussion?
I, I can't even think about approving this when it's going to be that close to an approved PDB. And they're coming in here saying, hey, we're going to develop this. Code says they have to be four hundred feet from any home.
Since from any inhabited residence or primary structure, neither are there.
Okay.
That's, that's the law. That's the law. I've taken the first, first two lines right off the law.
Yeah, I get that, but.
And I know that, you know, the, the PDD situation, but obviously. You know, that goes back to anything, you know, I buy a piece of property and there's commercial across the street. And then all of a sudden, when they want to build a Be Quick or a convenience store, oh, I don't want, I don't want that there. Well. Anything can happen and when you're living next to.
Who owns the property at eight seventy-one Whitehaven?
Western New York Public Broadcasting.
So you're just a tenant leasing the property?
Correct.
So, so you'd, you'd be, so you'd be a lessee from. An owner who's operating under a special use permit. So you got a special use permit under the umbrella of a special use permit.
I'm not aware of the special use permit for the radio tower, but the, the commercial.
There is.
Okay. But the commercial zoning of the property, I mean, it, it has a lot of potential uses in the code. And, you know, those uses, any, any one of those uses, in addition to obviously a special use permit used for solar could be presented. Over the last decade or the next decade. And I feel like, you know. You may have the same kind of chicken or the egg challenge here for any use.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm going to make a motion. That we recommend to the town board that they. Not allow us an applicant or not allow a special use permit. For, for this site.
I'm sorry, discussion has to be given between us and the PTD.
Uh, no, there doesn't. We're, we're, I'm making a motion before this board. To recommend to the town board that. They deny the application for a special use permit. Second.
So moved.
Any further discussion?
I would just make the discussion that I'll probably vote against this just because if the applicant does want to continue conversations with the PDD. And there may be a resolution to part of that. Issue that I think the applicant should have that opportunity.
Well, then the applicant could come back with something different based on their discussion, but for purposes of tonight's. Proceedings, my motion will stand and it has a second.
Just on the discussion.
Go ahead, Frank.
It appears as though this gentleman is meeting all the rules and regulations to put this in. Is that correct? You met all the, you've met all, and you can get two special uses, I think, for one topic. So. I don't know why we would vote against it. That's the problem. Why are we voting against this? It would meet all the regulations of the code and.
Well, I, I think the big.
Of the solar laws.
I, I'm gonna let Bob.
And this gentleman says he's going to do all the, the.
I think Bob is.
Screening and so forth. I'm just wondering what, why are we against this? Why is Bob against it?
Why is Bob against it? You want to say, Bobber? I, I stated it before, I'll state it again. Because a criteria for a special use permit and it's right in the code. Is compatibility with the surroundings, including planned uses. And I'll rest my case. So I guess. What it boils down to, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, guys. He meets the criteria on the solar law, but not the criteria on the special use permit. Is that my foul night, right? That, that is correct. That's correct. So Bob's. Bob's saying a motion to deny on this because of the special use. Permitting rules.
And just to go back to what I said earlier, I'm glad, Bob, you clarified that it says planned use. It's correct. Is that what you, you said? It said planned uses?
That is correct.
Yeah. That's a, that's a good clarification.
Yes, I, it's not in the solar law.
Well, it's not in the solar law, but it's with respect.
Should be though.
Permitted, you know.
Right.
Special use.
No, I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying that they come up with the new law about all the setbacks and forgot that part.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't think they forgot it because you still, in order to create a solar farm, you have to have a special use permit.
Right.
In the designated zoning districts.
And the applicant says to be tabled. Does that?
Well, you know, it seems like. Well, you know, I, it seems like this is a legal question. We ought to get in the attorney to give us a legal definition of whether they're meeting the rule or not.
Well, that.
Cause I'm not sure.
Bob, there's a motion on the floor.
Motion second. All right, motion is second. We're done. Any more discussion? Let's vote. All in favor of Bob's motion?
Aye.
Aye. The motion was not all of, all against?
No.
No, no, Frank?
No.
No, four against and two. So your motion's lost. So I'm going to make a motion that we table per the applicant's request.
I'd second that.
Second by Tim. Any discussion?
I would just, I I just to make make a discussion point um as far as the literal interpretation of the solar law. I I see the words inhabited residence or or structure or visual receptor. So that that to me seems like currently existing. Um, and then the other thing about the special use permit being compatible with future uses, I think I think it still remains to be seen. It's not proven that it's not compatible with a proposed future use. So there could be a demonstration that it that it is compatible and that that's persuasive that.
It doesn't meet the setback requirements.
Well, it's the setback is to an inhabited residence or structure. And there is one there, right?
We're, we're on one way. Right. And he meets all that criteria, but he doesn't meet the criteria on the special use. So Sandy's clarifying that it's still possible that he could meet that.
And and I also think that tabling would be appropriate because you don't, I don't want to see one thing happen or not happen if there could be a common ground that's acceptable by both parties.
Right. Okay, so we got, we got, we got a motion to table. Tim's second, motion to second. Any more discussion?
It looks like it's going to be adjourned. And I would like to hear the next go around what the attorney has to say about the legality.
Okay.
Approving it on the next go around.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. We're got you tabled. Okay, hope to see you again.
We'll be back. Were there any no's?
Thank you, everyone.
No.
I didn't vote.
Would, I'm sorry.
I'll vote to approve the table.
Table. We're all, we were all good. Bob was good on the table, too. Okay, rezoning the portion of this, you guys need, want to take a five minute break or? Okay, motion to um, I'm sorry, local law eleven. The Whitehaven rezoning project. Is anyone here? No one is here. Nobody online? Where did Pete go?
Nope, there's nobody else left.
Nobody's left? That's a continued table. Motion to table?
Motion to table. Well, it's just on, yeah, well.
It's a.
Just leaving that unfinished business.
Yep.
Uh, accessory uses, we're going to leave on unfinished business. I don't know why the solar application on two five nine five is still here, but we'll leave it in unfinished business and long roads unfinished business. Motion to adjourn.
You, are, are you here for someone?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need Pete.
You know what I would like to see? When we have, when we have unfinished business. If we could have a date when they came in.
They've been for a long time.
Right, so I mean, I I'm going through.
Well, this is still going on.
Acts of stuff trying to find.
We're ready to adjourn and. I guess if you wanted to introduce anybody.
No, but I mean, if we're going to discuss it, I needed when.
Okay, so we'll.
So I can find it.
We can adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second, second, Bob, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you want a new alternate? Is that?
Well.